All right, we'll call the September 1st, 2020 Meeting of the Planning Commission to Order. Call a roll, please. Barnett?
Here.
Baumann?
Here.
Bowlinger?
Yep.
Fagan?
Yep.
Gates?
Here.
Holcutter?
Yes.
Coop?
Here.
Lighter?
Here.
Nestal?
Here.
Offerdall?
Here.
Severson? And Wagonist?
Yes.
All right, that's a court. All right, we'll just call him, rise for the pledge.
(inaudible) to the flag. United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's one matter with minutes. Item number... Item number two, variance regarding Elmwood addition lots eighty-four. It reads, "Planning Commission Recommended City Council Deny." That was actually a denial by Planning Commission, so it'll be... It needs to be revised to be Planning Commission Denied a variance. Can I get a motion on that, please?
So moved by...
Is there a second?
A second.
A second by Chrisher Offerdall. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, call a roll, please. Barnett?
Yes.
Baumann?
Yes.
Demakis?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Holcutter?
Yes.
Coop?
Yes.
Lighter?
Yes.
Nestal?
Yes.
Offerdall?
Yes.
And Wagonist?
Yes.
All right. Very good, moving on then, we need to approve now the revised August 4th, 2020 minutes.
Motion by Coop, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lighter. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, call a roll, please. Barnett?
Yes.
Baumann?
Yes.
Demakis?
Yep.
Fagan?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Holcutter?
Yes.
Coop?
Yes.
Lighter?
Yes.
Nestal?
Yes.
Offerdall?
Yes.
And Wagonist?
Yes.
Okay. Very good, the minutes are approved. All right, first item up for business tonight is a subdivision and rezonance regarding Riverwood Second Edition Lot 1. It's a request on an application by Ron and Karen Thunsho as applicants and David Kopp as owner to create a new subdivision from an unplanted portion of the southwest quarter, northwest quarter of Section 21, 155 North, 83 West, to be known as Riverwood Second Edition Lot 1, and to rezone the new lot from AG Agricultural District to RA... or to RA Agricultural Residential District. The street address is located in... or I guess located near 111 50th Street Southwest. We'll turn it over to staff for the report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a one-lot sub and a rezoning, as the chairman said. Here's a location map, this is out west of town, past the 83 bypass, a little bit past the truck stop and whatnot, and it's kind of in an isolated area by the river, and you'll see railroad tracks bounded on the south side, and there's a lot of floodplain and whatnot, so it's kind of a remote area. Here's an aerial view. The applicant actually currently owns the property to the left or the west of the red box. You can see the buildings there, and what they'd like to do is pick up some additional land, which is shown outlined in the red box, from the current property owner that owns all the land extending to the east that's unplanted at this time. There's the zoning, everything's owned ag. The proposed lot is 3.75 acres, so it will not be large enough to remain ag, 20 acres required, so it will be rezoned to RA. Unfortunately, the future land use map kind of fades out here, but you can see low-density residential to the east, and certainly low-density or very low-density would be appropriate out here where in the river, there's not going to ever be a lot of development, the floodplain and that type of situation, so we're in conformance with the land use map. This is the subdivision. You'll notice that kind of line that snakes in from the upper-left and across is a 20-foot access easement. That's so that the property owner to the east, which is selling his property to them, can have access through their property to get back to the remainder of the property that he owns, so it doesn't become or we don't make it a landlocked parcel back there. Here's the current floodplain map. You can see the buildings that are existing, most of them are in the 100-year, there's some 500-year that comes through there, the 500-year, of course, is not a concern. If additional buildings are built, there may need to be some fill brought in to be one foot above the base flood elevation of the 100-year floodplain is what the floodplain requirements... what it requires. Findings of fact, it's a complete application, comp plan kind of fades out, doesn't totally address the area, but the applicant's request is consistent with land uses in the area. It meets all bulk requirements, the zoning ordinance and access easements provided to the adjacent land to the east, and the planning commission has the authority to hear this case that's been legally noticed and posted, and the hearing's held under the requirements of the state and local ordinances. Staff recommendations... Staff recommends planning commission adopt these findings of fact and approve the zoning and the subdivision, subject to the following conditions: 100-year floodplain needs to be shown on the final plat, and then there's some waterplate language here regarding subdivisions that the city engineer has to review the final plat and check the technical aspects and check all the boxes, so to speak, before it can go to the recorder's office and be recorded of record. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions from the board for Mr. Lang? All right, hearing none, we'll open... I'm sorry, do we have one? Okay, never mind. Hearing none, then we'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody who wishes to speak in support of this application? Please come forward. Anybody who wishes to speak for or against either side? All right, seeing nobody, we will close the public hearing, and I'll turn over the commissioners for their choice, bidding.
Motion to approve based on staff finding of fact and recommendations.
Motion by Wagonist to approve based on the findings of fact and recommendations.
Second by Commissioner Coop. Is there any discussion on the motion? Very good, we'll call a roll. Barnett?
Yes.
Baumann?
Yes.
Demakis?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Holcutter?
Yes.
Coop?
Yes.
Lighter?
Yes.
Nestal?
Yes.
Offerdall?
Yes.
And Wagonist?
Yes.
All right.
Motion carries. I noticed on a few of these things that are coming up, there are some specificities in the report and recommendations, and I think, just for clarity and for the minutes, if we move them, if there's something specific like that one, we show the 100-year floodplain, can we work that into the motion, maybe? Just my suggestion. I don't particularly care, but I think it makes things cleaner. Thanks, just my little two cents on that. All right, the next item on the agenda is a variance request regarding the north 235 feet of Outlot 1, Section 28, Township 155, Range 83. This is a request on an application by Derek Tennyson for a variance from Section 21-8C of the zoning ordinance, rules concerning accessory buildings to allow an accessory building to be placed in front of the setback. This property is located at 3900 Highway 2 and 52 West, near the Flying J Truck Stop area. We'll turn it over to staff for the report.
Thank you. Again, we're out west in the two-mile area. This is actually almost adjacent to the truck stop. Here's a location map that shows where it is. It's kind of a strange lot, I don't know, it was split in the past, like it looks like there was one lot that got split into two lots or something, it looks almost like it would be landlocked, but it is not. I'll show you in a minute why not. This slide shows the lot in the yellow, and in the red line that's dashed is the front yard setback. There was a garage that formerly sat in that area, and the applicant would like to, again, have a detached garage there, and as you'll see as we proceed, there's some reasons why we feel the variance is justified. This is why it's not landlocked, there's an access easement that exists, and you can see the driveway doesn't actually follow it necessarily, kind of, but there is access, so it's not a landlocked lot back there. Here's an aerial view, this shows... this is from 2015. This shows the garage that was there formerly, I believe it burnt down in 20... I thought in 2015, maybe later in the year, but this is where the other... the existing garage was, and also where the proposed garage is desired. You'll notice also there's a concrete pad kind of up towards the top of the slide, that's down in the floodplain, though, as you'll see here in a minute. So, the applicant's home is in the kind of orange color, the previous and proposed garage site in blue, and then the concrete pad is in the yellow outline. You can see the steep topography, especially along the creek or along the river or the oxbow, and even leading down to the garage pad or the concrete pad, which is in the floodplain. So, there's not a lot of room, if you look at this slide and all the contours, and you look at this slide, which is the current FEMA floodplain map, a lot of the site is in 100-year floodplain, and FEMA is working on new maps that are going to be even more restrictive, so when they're adopted, which will probably be pretty soon, even more of the site is impacted, so there's not a whole lot of room left there. If you look at that slide or this slide here between the floodplain, and you look at this one here between the topo, there's not much room to put the garage in the other place. So, the justification is due to topography of the property and prevalence of the 100-year floodplain, the only place the applicant can reasonably locate the detached garage is in the front setback. Findings of fact, the applicant has submitted a complete application. Per staff analysis, the request is consistent with Minot's comp plan. There are grounds for hardship through the property's topographic conditions and presence of the 100-year floodplain. This variance request does not meet all the bulk requirements, but the variance will satisfy that need if it's approved, and then again, we have the standard language saying that we've posted, set legal notice, we're holding this hearing under all the rules of the North Dakota Century Code and our local ordinances, so we're street legal, so to speak. If this request is denied, the applicant has the right to appeal to the Minot City Council, which can only grant an appeal with a majority vote. So, our recommendation is to approve the variance due to the exceptional topographic conditions on the property, the presence of the 100-year floodplain across a significant portion of the lot. Staff has determined that there is a justifiable hardship to support variance to Section 21-8, Paragraph C, and allow the accessory building to be located in the front yard setback. So, if you have any questions about the variance, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Lang?
Mr. Lang, is there any conditions on this, then? It says staff recommendations, conditions, there really is no conditions.
Well, there's no... there's really no conditions, though.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Any other questions for Mr. Lang? All right, we will open the public hearing. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on behalf of the application? Please come forward. Anybody who wishes to speak in... against the application, please step forward. Anybody who wishes to speak on either side? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and turn over the commission.
Make a motion to approve based on the hardship of the property's topographic conditions and presence of the 100-year floodplain. This is supported by Section 21.8C.
Motion by Commissioner Offerdall to approve based upon the 100-year floodplain presence, the topographical conditions, and staff report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lighter. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll call a roll. Barnett?
Yes.
Baumann?
Yes.
Demakis?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Holcutter?
Yes.
Coop?
Yes.
Lighter?
Yes.
Nestal?
Yes.
Offerdall?
Yes.
And Wagonist?
Yes.
All right.
Motion carries. The third item on the agenda is a request for variance in regards to Brooklyn Edition Lot 47 Lots 1 and 2, on application by Delwyn Groninger for variance from Section 7-7C of the zoning ordinance, lot height, area and yard setback requirements, to reduce the front yard setback from 25 to 15 feet on property currently zoned R3B. This is located at 425 Fifth Avenue Southwest. We will turn it over to staff for the report, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's another variance request, this is for a 10-foot variance, the front yard setback. Here's the proposed location at Park Street and Fifth Avenue Southwest. It's a pretty small lot and a really small house that exists on there. It's my understanding that the house has been in the family for a number of years, and Mr. Groninger would like to purchase it and tear down the house and build something a little bit bigger, but as you'll see pretty soon, a small lot, and there's a lot of constraints to develop the lot. The topo lines are kind of hard to see here, you can see them crossing the street pretty well in orange, but they're hard to see in the grass, but the yellow outline is basically all steep slopes, so there's not much of the lot left except where the house is, and could be expanded a little bit in order to develop this lot. This is a sketch that Mr. Groninger put together. It shows the existing house in kind of a red outline, and then the proposed house that he'd like to put with a garage, and then he's got dimensions to the different slopes and site obstacles and property lines and things like that to fit it all on there. This is a photograph of the house, sits clear up on steep slopes on two sides. There's some existing trees that would be nice to save, I think that he's going to be able to do that. There's another shot of it. Here's the other side. This is the side where he's requested the variance for 10-foot variance to be 15 feet from the property line instead of 25, and you can see that with the house being up on that upper plateau, that, you know, it's... it is what it is, I guess, you're not going to change that slope very easily, so this is the garage or the... I'm sorry, the alley, view down the alley, which the garage would take access from the alley at his proposed new development of the site. So, the applicant's completed... submitted... I'm sorry, submitted a complete application for variance. The request is consistent with comp plan, it does not meet the bulk regulations because too close, but if the variance is granted, then relief could be available there. The Minot Planning Commission has the authority to hear this based on being legally noticed and posted, and we're holding this hearing under the requirements of the state and local ordinances. If the request is denied, the applicant has the right to appeal it to the Minot City Council, which can only grant an appeal with a majority vote. Staff recommends adoption of this variance due to the exceptional topographic conditions of the property. The requirement of a 25-foot front setback is unreasonably restrictive to allow development of the lot. And one condition is associated with this one, the garage has to be set back at least 18 feet from the alley property line. I think it's shown right now as being 16 or something, and I'm pretty sure that the applicant can meet that by just scooching everything over a couple of feet, but in order to meet code requirements for that side of the lot, it does need to be at 18 feet. So, with that, as an explanation, I'd be glad to entertain any questions you might have.
Is there any questions for Mr. Lang? All right, seeing none, actually I have one, real quick one. Lance, back on that second to last picture, looks like it's from that one. This is the side the variance is being requested for, right? Along this line?
That's correct.
This side? Is there any... they're bringing... they wouldn't bring any concern with traffic and line of sight there, would it, based upon the fact that the street is lower?
No, I don't know how it would, because the slope's going to stay the same as to what's existing there now.
Right.
They're just going to build... they're just going to build a house a little... 10 feet closer to that, to where it drops off?
Yep, gotcha.
So, it'll still be elevated.
Okay, very good. No, that's all I was curious about. All right, if there's nothing else from the rest of the commission, we will open the public hearing. Are there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak on behalf of the application? Anybody who wishes to speak in opposition? Anybody who wants to speak on either side? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing, turn it over to the commission.
Motion to approve based on staff finding of fact and recommendations.
Motion by Commissioner Wagonist to approve based on findings, facts and recommendation. Do you maybe want to add about the garage setback?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Along with, the garage must be set back at least 18 feet?
18 feet, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Offerdall. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll call a roll. Barnett?
Yes.
Baumann?
Yes.
Demakis?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Holcutter?
Yes.
Coop?
Yes.
Lighter?
Yes.
Nestal?
Yes.
Offerdall?
Yes.
And Wagonist?
Yes.
All right.
Motion carries. All right, final item on the business portion of the agenda is a proposed subdivision regarding Tida? Tida? Tida?
Tida.
Thank you. Second Edition Lots 1 and 2. A request from Tida LLC and Gabriel Holt, owners combining Lot 1 of Tida Edition and Lot 11, heirs addition to create a new subdivision to be known as Tida Second Edition Lots 1 and 2. These properties are located at 601 and 619 North Broadway. Turn it over to Mr. Lang for his last report.
Yes, sir. This is a pretty straightforward, simple one. You may recall this property, it was when Tida Edition came in, it's right south of Taco John's on Broadway, and the applicants had an opportunity to pick up the small building in the lower right corner of the site there, you see? So, they were able to do that, and then decided to replant this into two lots and with a new subdivision called Tida Second Edition. It's owned commercial along Broadway there, C2. Land use map is also commercial, so it's in conformance, everything's good to go there. There's an interesting... there's a deed restriction on one of the lots that we didn't catch through Tida Edition, and it came up now, it doesn't really have anything to do with the subdivision approval tonight, but basically, worst-case scenario is that there... nothing could be built on except parking lot or landscaping, but the owner and the city are working to see if that can be resolved, and the deed restriction can be rescinded so that a building could be across part of it, we'll have to see how... what happens there. Here's the two lots. They are entertaining the thought of two different businesses, one on each lot, and because Broadway carries so much traffic in DOT or North Dakota DOT is... and the engineering department here in Minot are concerned about multiple accesses, so each lot will not get their own access. There's a shared access that straddles the lot line, and the final dimensions of that will be determined by NDOT as to what their preference is. So, findings of fact, it's a complete application, consistent with comp plan, meets all the bulk requirements, the zoning ordinance, and we met all the requirements for the public hearing tonight, based on... based on local laws and the state Century Code. Recommendation, staff recommends that this be approved with four or five conditions. Yeah, five conditions. First is storm management plan is required for the future development. Second, a traffic study is required per North Dakota DOT requirements for the future development. The third is that access is limited to the single shared access point that I showed you a minute ago. Number four, any other existing accesses are to be removed by the owner at the time of development. And number five, sorry, border plate language about filing the subdivision with the recorder, the fact that the city engineer has to review all the technical aspects and sign off on it. This is all the legal protocol, I guess, to bring the plat to fruition in its final form when it's recorded. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for staff on this agenda item? All right, seeing none, we will open the public hearing. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on behalf of the application? Anybody who wishes to speak in opposition? Anybody who wants to say anything in regards to the application? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and it is now at the hands of the commission.
Motion to approve based on staff finding of fact and conditions.
Got a motion to approve based on findings, fact, and recommendations. Second by Commissioner Coop. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, we will call the roll. Barnett?
Yes.
Baumann? Baumann?
Yes, sorry about that.
Nope, that's fine. Now, Demakis?
Yes.
Faken?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Polkalter?
Yes.
Coop?
Yes.
Leiter?
Yes.
Nestal?
Yes.
Offertal?
Yes.
And Wagonist?
Yes.
Okay.